I'm doing fine, thank you. Okay.
I would like to call the special meeting of September 14, 2017, to order. Will the Secretary of Police call the room?
Madam Chair Christie.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Hitterdale.
Here.
Commissioner Murashi. Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Rush.
Here.
Vice Chair Shaffer. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, everyone please stand for a pledge of allegiance by my Commissioner Garcia.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Okay, does any member of the public have any public comments on a non-agendized item? Okay, then we'll move forward with the agenda. This is a time for the commission to consider matters under the consent calendar. And do I have a motion to consider item A with the excuse absence of Commissioner Murashi and Commissioner Nguyen?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rush. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We don't know. Yeah, we'll go ahead because he made sales come. Okay? Just remind whoever if I'm not here, okay? All right, we'll come back and do that. Okay. The vote is ununanimous, okay? Now, this is time for Commissioner's communication disclosure. We will now move to have Commissioners Communication show to them. If there has anything they wish to disclose with regard to items on today's agenda. I visited the building. Anyone else? Okay. Next, we're going to go to the business calendar. And on this, it's now in time for the public hearing on item number one for the Historic Resources Commission application number 2017-17 and Historic Register Categorization number 2017-16 for the property located at Bay 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 North Main Street. Staff will now make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the -- It's my first time, but I think I know most of you up there.
I haven't been.
My name's Ricardo Soto. I'm an associate planner here with the city. Up for discussion before you is consideration to designate the property at 888 North Main Street to the Santa Ana Register of Historical Properties and categorization as landmark. And just as a refresher, landmark category is a building, structure, object, or site that has a historical, cultural significance to the city, or a building, structure, object, or site that has a unique architectural significance. This is the Security Bank Building located at 888 North Main Street. The building's located on the west side of North Main Street between Civic Center and 10th Street. The property extends from Main Street all the way back towards Sycamore, where a surface parking lot is located. The building is designed in New Formalism style, is 10 stories in height, and is an eight-story tower built on a two-story podium. The exterior walls of the tower are built of concrete and characterized by bays of windows deeply inset to create a honeycomb effect and is -- let's see. Each bay contains a pair of dark tinted windows separated by molded mullions. The Security Bank Building is historically significant for its architectural style, having been designed by master architect Welton Beckett and Associates, and is association with post-World War II development of downtown Santa Ana as a financial headquarters in Orange County. The architectural style of the Security Bank Building is an example of one of the modern architectural substyles that emerged as a response to the perceived sterility of international style. New Formalism began in 1960s in employed proportion, massing, articulation, and detailing derived from classism. Flat-roofed, frequently with heavy overhang roof slabs, New Formalism buildings featured smooth exterior concrete, stone, and marble, usually single-volume buildings with rectangular and circular often set on podiums. The use of a colonade as a compositional device, the introduction of arches, and the use of ornamental screens of concrete, metal, stone also characterized New Formalist buildings. The second criterion, too, the architect, the building was designed by architect Welton Beckett and Associates. Welton Beckett and Associates is one of the most important and prominent architectural firms to emerge from Southern California in the mid-20th century. Architect Welton Beckett and Associates is credited with transforming the cityscape of post-war Southern California with modern commercial and institutional design. The Getty Institute described Welton Beckett and Associates as "an acclaimed architect whose iconic designs defined the built environment of Los Angeles in the mid-20th century." Beckett graduated from architectural school in 1927, then he later studied in France. By the 1960s, Welton Beckett and Associates were the nation's largest architectural office. Beckett and his firm are responsible for dozens of Southern Californian -- Southern California's significant modern structures of post-war era, including the Capitol Records Tower in Hollywood, the Cinerama Dome, Los Angeles Music Center, Beverly Hilton Hotel, and various campus buildings at UCLA. The third criterion, criterion four, the building played a significant role in the evolution of Santa Ana as a financial headquarters in Orange County. In October 1964, the Carter Company applied for a building permit to construct a 10-story bank building, which at that point was valued at over $2 million. The Security Bank Building was constructed as the Orange County headquarters for the Security Bank. Security Bank between the '60s and '80s went through a series of mergers and acquisitions, which by 1989 resulted in the fifth-largest bank in the United States. From 1967 through 1996, the building housed professional tenants, including attorneys, insurance agents, investigators, and accountants, as well as the bank. The county of Orange leased the entire building in 1996 from then-owner Eastcom Corp. of Newport Beach. And although numerous interior renovations were made over the years to accommodate different various tenants, the exterior of the building has remained pretty much unaltered. Based on the analysis in the report and the information shared with you tonight here during the presentation, staff recommends that the Historic Resource Commission approve HRCA 2017-17 and HRC 2017-16. That concludes my presentation. I can now answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, Madam Secretary, have you received any written communications? Okay, we'll come back. The public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak, and which we do have one person beside the applicant, if there are forms for this, okay? And Mr. Bobo, would you like to speak at this particular tone?
Well, maybe this time I'll make you proud of the special meeting. I'll come up with it. Hello, my name's William Bobo, and I just wanted to extend thank you to the commission for having a special meeting to hear about our project. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, we have Sherry Kerr.
Thank you so much, Chairman Christie, and to all of you on the board for allowing me to speak today. I'm speaking in opposition to approval of anything as a historic designation of this building and also the Mills Act. I understand that the inside will be gutted, so there's nothing really to preserve there. The outside is, I don't know Mr. Welton or his organization, but to my understanding, there's nothing in Orange County that they have done, or certainly in Santa Ana, that would have any ties to any, you know, former business people or people -- I know I lived on Heliotrope for 24 years, and the people who owned that house had businesses in Orange County, so that concerns me. I also don't see that the occupants of that building will probably have any significant cultural or political or business ties necessarily. And quite honestly, I know Mr. Hera well and have had my dealings with him, and I perceive this to be one more way to dodge taxes and skirt code upgrades and that kind of thing. So I'm hopeful that this committee will consider that. I don't think it's deserving of either the Historic Society designation or the Mills Act and will hold him accountable for doing everything he should do in Santa Ana. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
At this point, staff would like to clarify that there is no Mills Act -- Mills Act application at this time.
There's no Mills Act. Why isn't it registered? There's no Mills Act on this. It's just a Historic Register. Thank you so much. Okay? Okay? Now, is there anyone else that would like to speak who does not speak? Okay, not? I would like to thank you for your comments. Does the -- I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Does any commissioner have any comments or questions of staff or those who have spoken on the subject? Commissioner Shaffer, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to apologize that I was late. So sometimes in real estate, you can't control everything. Anyway, so I'm happy to see that we're looking at mid-century, you know, ranch homes and buildings like this to preserve them, so I don't really have a problem with that. But my question for staff was regarding the Mills Act. Once a property is on the registry, it's really, it doesn't come back -- it's pretty much a rubber stamp to get it on the Mills Act. So there's nothing to say that at the next meeting, they wouldn't ask to be on the Mills, correct?
They -- the applicant would have to apply. The applicant would have to pay the fee.
Right.
And we would consider, you would be considering the Mills Act just like you do any other. Oftentimes, you do consider them separately. They could come back, but it would be at your discretion, as it is with any other Mills Act application.
And I know with the residents, we don't, aren't concerned with the interior, but often with a building of this type, there's a public lobby, so to speak. And I haven't been in this, so I, maybe William could tell us, but I don't know, you know, if that is going to be generally preserved in terms of its massing and its openings and its light and things like that, so maybe you could --
As part of the historical study that was provided by a historical consultant, all of the character-defining elements were exterior, so they didn't identify anything on the interior as being significant. And it might be due to, over the course of the last 50 years, the different tenants going in. If there may have been something there at some point, it's no longer there. So everything identified was all exterior.
Okay. So it's been remodeled enough over the years that it's no longer --
It may have been. It just wasn't included in the analysis. It just spoke about the character-defining features on the exterior.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Rush?
Well, Phil echoed, or I will echo Phil's comments in that I was wondering what would be done on the interior. And as my understanding is, the interior is, has been completely stripped bare. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, from what I can see when I drive by, it's, there's construction lighting hanging there. It looks like the inside of a coal mine. It's pitch black and there's nothing but bare beams and wires hanging there.
The property owner received a demolition permit to remove non-bearing walls within the interior of the building just about a year ago. And it's my understanding from what William shared with us was that that storefront, that wall that's missing, was a result of a high-wind event that knocked the glass down. So that should still be there, and that's going to be replaced. But they did receive --
Were there any pictures taken of the interior to at least save a photographic record of the original interior, or?
We don't have anything that suggests what was there prior to this demolition was original, because there has been numerous tenant improvements over the years from the different professional office uses that have been there, to then the county of Orange that occupied it for a number of years. So I don't, there's nothing to suggest that prior to this demolition, that what was there was original.
Well, let me ask you this. Is, is there any effort being made by the applicant to ensure that the new interior will reflect some tie to the style of the building's exterior and the architecture of that was, that was promoted by Welton Beckett and Associates? By the way, his two sons are both architects and both still living and practicing. One of them was a consultant on the redo of the, of the Masonic Temple building after it was purchased by the Scientology crowd.
My understanding is the primary lobby area is to retain the high ceilings and then going into a gallery space. It's also supposed to retain the high ceilings going into the, the north wing of the building. And then all the storefronts with the high glass are also supposed to remain.
Is there, is there any ability on our part to request or mandate that the applicant seek to replicate or make some, I mean, to me, it seems, I'm going to vote for this, but I am disturbed that the interior was completely stripped bare, and we're calling this building a landmark. And the exterior is the only thing that, that remains, you know, as a feature. There's nothing left on the interior. It would be nice if, since they are redoing it, there would be some effort made to reconnect with that, with that style of architecture, which is so uniquely popular today. Would the applicant like to address that?
The, like Ricardo had mentioned, the interior had gone through several generations of remodeling. There are some of the original aspects, the bronze-ribbed accent architectural elements by the elevators. We are maintaining that, and we're trying to maintain more of the feeling that was from the very beginning. But other architectural elements that we can retain, and that would be more of the bronze accents, they will, they will be retained. So.
So you'd be willing to commit to that?
Yes.
Will there be some inside? Could we ask there be some, you know, a bronze plaque or something that talks about Welton Beckett and why this building's a landmark and so forth?
Yeah, I'll talk to the owner about that.
Huh?
I'll, I'll request that from the owner.
Okay.
But, yeah, because Beckett has done some incredible work throughout Southern California.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I see that, too.
I have no further comments.
Anyone else?
I know I was late, so I apologize. Did you mention in your report what the intended new use of the building is?
The intended new use is going to be residential, so the proposal is to convert the office building to apartments.
Got it. Thank you. For rent or for sale?
For rent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Hearing that there's no other questions of the applicant or staff from admission, I now declare that the public hearing is now closed. Now, do I have a motion to consider item number one?
I will make that motion. Let me get back to my paper here. So I move to approve Historic Resources Commission application 2017-17 as referenced item number one on our public hearing docket and Historic Register Categorization number 2017-16, strategic plan numbers 52, colon, 5, comma, 3. Is that enough detail?
Yes.
All right.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Rush. Seconded by Commissioner Shaffer. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion caps carried unanimously. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Now, we are now moving into work-study, okay? Just item number two, which will be on, the work-study session is on policy discussion on the Mills Act program. How appropriate.
Right. We are on --
Historic Resource Commission Review Authority.
We wanted to talk to you a little bit, we were hoping to be able to have additional information here for you tonight, but that didn't quite work out the way we had anticipated. So we want to give you an update on what has happened this year in terms of the Mills Act applications. In previous years, as those of you who have been on the commission understand, is we've typically had about someplace between 2028 applications to, to process as part of this program. This year, it was a little different. This year, we have, we took in 77 Mills Act applications. And along with, and along with that, a number of, probably the same amount of designations plus a few more designations that did not include Mills Acts, similar, such as this one that you heard tonight. That is a huge change for us. And in can, we were, we were expecting there to be, we were expecting many new applications this year. And we did hire, we talked to, as we talked to you before, we, we hired a consultant to work on helping us with preparing these applications. And as Verney explained in the work program that he had outlined for you as the head of the Historic Resources Program that we have here, we were going to be doing staff training with you, with the consultant, as well as with the, with the staff, so that we can have a broader group of people trained in historic preservation and able to do these projects as a benefit for staff development as well as for continuity in the city. So these were some, these are some of the issues that we were anticipating. However, we did not anticipate 77. So we have scheduled for your future agendas, we are going to be doing 27 applications. We'll be processing 27 applications that we have on the next, on the 28th, the 10th, and the 19th. And so those will be, those will be approved now. And those will, all those 27 will, will be, will definitely make that December 31st deadline. In addition to that 27, we have, and I'm not sure quite how the math works out here, but we had, we, oh, excuse me, we've already approved six, so, and then in addition to that, we have 41 additional ones that we're looking at processing. So with that, that is, that is going to place a load on staff. We are trying to figure out how we can address those additional applications. And at this time, we don't have a solution, and we don't know how many of them we will be able to process in time for a, for that December 31st deadline where, we have a December 31st deadline in which the applicants have to have gotten through city council and then have signed all the paperwork and then have it recorded. So there's, there's a little, there's a lag time, so we have to be able to go to, it comes to you, then it goes to city council, and then there's additional work on the back end. And their, you know, their ability to be able to claim that tax, the Mills Act tax is dependent on having it filed by December 31st. So we are looking at a number of options in terms of how we're going to be proceeding with this, and we will keep you updated on that. But right now, we don't have a solution, and there is the potential that a number of these applications that were filed within this year may unfortunately not make it by this year's December 31st deadline. We don't have the numbers for you right now, but we will at your next meeting, so. And we are looking forward, looking forward, looking forward and trying to figure out how we are going to be able to address these, these applications. So one of the things that, in terms of those numbers, I should have mentioned that I did not, was that three of the applications were actually not eligible for the, for the Mills Act contract for various reasons. They weren't eligible for designation or for the Mills Act contract. So we should have more information next week. We are, we're scheduling that, but there will be, unfortunately, this is the first time, but there will be applications that we will not be able to do all of them this year. So it's an unfortunate thing. I want you to be aware of it. We will be contacting the applicants who are not, we're taking them purely in the order in which they submitted their applications. So they're all coming through in that order, and we're maintaining that order, but, but at this point, they are not going to be able to all go through. So that said, that kind of, that concludes our, our work-study session on this. We'd hope to have more information for you, some alternatives that might allow us to do more, or, or maybe as many as we possibly could, but at this point, that's where we are, so. We needed to update you on that. In terms of the Historic Resources Commission Review Authority, we revised the agenda. Unfortunately, we can't, it was not posted, so we can't discuss that today. We had hoped to talk to you about a number of items which I will introduce to you under the planning manager's comments, staff member comments. So we'll talk a little bit about those then. So that concludes staff's presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Shaffer?
So I last understood we were looking for somebody to kind of replace Holly. And I know you're, several staff people are filling in those shoes right now, but you were looking to hire somebody. Can you tell us where you are in that search? Is that still the expectation?
We, we are looking for somebody, but what we have decided is to restructure the program. We would like to have a, we'd like to have a more robust program. I guess that's the way I'd like to talk to you. I guess that's the way, um, I'd like to talk to you about it. That's some of the things that we're going to be talking about in future workshops, is we would like to, one of the things in particular that we want to, um, talk to you about your review authority, Commissioner Rush referred to, referred tonight to whether or not, um, you would have authority over, uh, review authority over the application that came before you tonight. That is not, you know, in this, in this, the way it's currently structured, you would not, because it's, there's no exterior structures, um, but we do want to discuss that. There is a res, an existing resolution that delegates certain authority to staff. We wanted to, um, bring that forward to you again and talk about what is appropriate for staff review and what, um, and what perhaps should, um, be coming to you more aggressively and, and what perhaps, um, so that we can continue on with that, um, that part of it. I'm drifting into, um, I'm drifting in, we have a little bit of a problem, I'm drifting into something I'm not supposed to be talking about on this agenda. We have a little bit of a problem because these are what they call special meetings, and we don't have as much flexibility with the agendas on special meetings as we do. So, um, I'm in response to your question, which was directly, um, regarding mine, so, but I'm drifting off a little bit, so I'm going to be careful. Any other questions?
Any other questions? I just got the fees. What happens to the ones that, you know?
All of them that were accepted by October fourth paid their fees, they are accepted application and unless, and we have determined all those, the applications that were not eligible have already been determined and they're, you know, that, that's taken care of, they didn't pay their fees. So, none of them will have to pay the full fees without the waiver. So, that, that doesn't impact them at all, it has no, um, this lack of, um, this particular issue will not impact them.
Okay. But the ones that were not able to get to this year, like you're saying, that will carry over?
Yes.
That would definitely-
Yes.
Just wanted to put that on record.
The application, once the applications are, once the applications are complete, accepted as complete by, um, the city, uh, it's, it's a matter of processing them, so.
I have a question regarding the three that are, um, determined not eligible. First of all, are those, do those people know that yet?
I believe we've notified, we have not notified them.
Okay, and, and secondly, um, do they get their fees refunded if they are not, won't qualify for the program?
That's correct.
Um, Melanie, would you like to address? Everyone, it's Melanie McCann.
Thank you, just for a queer, a quick one. So, to get on the list, as you recall, there was no fee, so, we did the evaluation basically for free, and then the Mills Act, they submitted a check, we held the checks, so if they redeemed ineligible, the check was never processed and it would be returned.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, I understand that at each of the three meetings, we're going to get a little more education on this, right?
That's correct.
And toasted and everything, so, prepare for a long evening, okay? Long evening, so if I understand, it's twenty-seven for the Mills Act, right? Twenty-seven per meeting for the next three meetings?
No, there's nine for the next three meetings.
Oh, okay.
Nine, nine, twenty-seven total, so there are nine for the next three meetings.
Okay, that's why I'm clarifying that, okay? Total-
Forty-one to go after the end of the year.
Forty-one to go after that, that's on the, okay. Okay, that's, you know, I'm really, twenty-seven per meeting, you know, and that's why I wanted to clarify that, like, total, the total forty-one for, for, for the meeting. I fixing to say, man, I'm going to have to live on, you know, drive the street.
Just one other question regarding the forty-one. Normally, I think we're meeting four times a year, so forty-one could take us all year to do that. Will we be, should we anticipate some other added meetings in the, after the first?
We will probably be adding, yeah, new meetings, um, to the packet. And there may, we may even request that you meet additionally this year, but-
Right, because our last meeting for the year would be October. That would be, so forth, so.
Am I, am I correct that we have meetings upcoming on the twenty-eighth, the fifth, and the, and the nineteenth? Is that right?
That's correct. And more. So, clear your calendar, I'll bring more. Okay. Thank you so much, staff, um, for your presentation and, and we know that you're hard chargers and you're going to go down these applications, but, anyway, we appreciate your hard work, what you're doing, okay? This is a monumental task and, and, you know, we have faith in you guys, okay, to get this done, all right? All right, moving on. Next, we have a staff member comments.
Yes, I guess the first, uh, staff member comment I want to make is that, um, you have a new planning, acting planning manager, acting planning manager.
Again?
I have to, I have to refer to that. Vince Fergoso was, um, was appointed, I believe, the first of the, the first of the month, so, first of last month? First of this month, right? Yeah. So, he's been, it's been wonderful, it's been, it's been, it's been wonderful, it's been much better, so things are, things are getting a little, um, less hectic, so we're, we're very excited, so he's going to be up here, um, with us here, so-
Let's give Vince a hand.
Let's, thank you. He's coming back for more, yes.
Our rocket, our rocket, right?
The thing that I, I do want to talk about is we are bringing forth, you are going to see, um, you're going to see coming forth, not on your agenda, but on the Planning Commission agenda, uh, within the next few months, two zone changes, uh, one to, uh, the Henninger Park SD and the other one to the French Park SD. And I believe as commissioners, you understand that those, um, those two, um, historic districts, the authority for reviewing historic districts was, um, was enacted prior to the commission's creation. So, they assign the responsibilities for historic, uh, review to the Planning Commission, which, now that we have a historic commission, um, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So, we will be amending those two zoning code, that's the purpose of those two zoning code amendments. The, the process will remain the same, it will, it will be smooth, uh, for, it will, that, it will still remain their zoning, so if they have zoning issues, like they want a variance for, um, a setback or some other kind of zoning issue, that would go before the Planning Commission, but, um, but the authority for review of, um, exterior modifications to the structures would come to you. I think some of you saw a recent application that we, we kind of brought it to the forefront, was a recent application, um, that came forward in French Park. And I think we're having another one, um, that's right next door to it, um, that will, it's also going to go through before we have a chance to have this, uh, zoning amendment enacted. But we're excited about that. With that zoning amendment, it will mean that the, um, review authority for, um, two of our oldest and, um, historic districts will be in your, um, under your authority. So, I think that's a really positive thing and that, that will be coming forward, but it won't come to you, but, just so that you know, when you see that, um, that's what it is.
Do you have a date for that, Candy?
Pardon me?
Do you have a date that that's coming before?
No, we don't have it scheduled yet, and it will go to Planning Commission and then go to City Council twice. It'll have to be, it's, it's an ordinance change, amendment, so, um, so you'll see it a number of times. The next thing we wanted to do was just to give you a little bit of an update on our local Historic Register and where we are. We have, through our, um, July meeting, we now have six hundred and fifty-one properties that, um, are de, are designated, and all of them are posted on the website as of today. And we can thank Melanie and her associates, um, back here, uh, for getting that up there, and we're, we're very-
Let's give them a hand.
Happy. That, that is not, um, uh, that is not updated. The, the map is still in progress of being updated, that takes a little bit longer. But what you need to be confident in is the, the place with the, the information source that the staff planners use at the counter is our computer, uh, land use information, which is called, it's a computer program called SAPEN, and, um, that is Santa Ana Property Information Network, or something, information. And that is what we use, and that is up to date and has always been up to date. So, um, but it's important for us to have up to, up to date information, um, available to the public as well, so. With that, uh, that concludes my comments, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, McCann? My voice is going. Okay, thank you so much, okay, thank you so much. Okay, now, Commissioner members' comments, so let's start with you now, Annie.
Let's see, it's hard to be first. Well, it's kind of exciting news that, um, that, um, the ordinance amendment, transferring, part of the review process is going to go from Planning Commission to the Historic Resources Commission. So, that's basically my comment right now.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to thank the staff for their great job they're doing processing. Phil?
Yeah, I know it's got to be overwhelming, I knew there were going to be a lot, uh, when we had this deadline imposed. Seventy-seven is a lot. I know, I think we had like twenty-some in the pipeline before that, so it was a lot of last-minute scrambling, um, which I kind of anticipated would be the response from the public. So, thank you for working on that, it's got to be a bit overwhelming, and, um, and good luck in looking for somebody to replace Holly, um, that can kind of spearhead all of that. I'm sure Melanie and everybody sitting here would love to see that happen yesterday, um, so they could get some things off their plates, but, um, I appreciate that. You mentioned the, um, the list of the historic properties being up to date now. Could, um, we maybe get an email sent out with a link to that? I think that'd be really helpful for the commissioners, because there's probably, there may be somebody here that hasn't looked at all those properties or hasn't, I don't mean physically looked at them, but, to see that, the list, because there's, it's a pretty impressive list, I think, and it's about to grow, um, it sounds like, by quite a few. So, anyway, um, that's it, and, again, I'm sorry I was running a few minutes late today.
Ms. Larry?
Well, I'm always appreciative for, uh, the hard work that's done, but this time particularly for two things, getting the, uh, website up and running, and also, Ms. Neal, I really appreciate all this effort under, under very good all circumstances, certainly, uh, consider and feel for you.
Yeah.
Well, obviously, this issue of the fees is a big deal, and I, I gather that, that discussion about fees has been mashed into a bigger discussion about, uh, expanding, I don't know, the role of the commission or, or something. You're going to elaborate on that, uh, we got sort of cryptic comments on that, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that, you know, I, I no doubt, one of the reasons you had such a crush of applications was because word got out that the fees were going to, were going to go back up astronomical, to astronomical levels, so, there's no doubt that that compelled a lot of people to, uh, to submit an application. It would be nice to see our fee structure be something that is, that can be consistent and has some sort of a long-term commitment from the city and not something where every thirty-six months, we got a gun held to our head, and it now becomes this giant political process that we have to lobby council members and, you know, it's tied to whether or not, uh, we have a deficit that year, what, I just, I just think that is kind of a knee-jerk, um, process that isn't very long-term, is not very helpful to staff, or to the residents, or to this historical commission, or to the, the broader efforts of the city to celebrate and save its historic assets. It's, it's just, it's very disrespectful to that, so, um, uh, I, I would suggest that the city might engage in a dialogue with Preserve Orange County, uh, which is the new preservation organization for the county, meant to model what LA Conservancy is doing in, in LA, and the San Ana Historical Preservation Society, to get some input on, you know, suggestions as to what's going on in other cities, so that maybe it, uh, um, uh, some possible options for, for changing the, the process. I, I, I know that in some cities, I want to say Anaheim, but, I may be wrong, but Anaheim has a structured deal where the first X number of applications pay a nominal amount, and then when they exceed that number, then the fee goes up dramatically. And I'm not suggesting that has to be the answer, but, you know, something's better than what we have now, so, um, but, that's a suggestion. We did speak at the last meeting, I believe, about, uh, reinstituting the awards program that was, that was done some years ago, uh, from, from the Historic Resources Commission. I know that part of that was a bronze plaque program, I know that got suspended when dollars got tight. It would seem to me that, um, given that we're, we're out of, we're out of the threat of bankruptcy, that, that might be, um, reinstituted, or at the very least, we offer to split the cost with the, with the property owner, or something, to encourage that, that, that those things be installed on buildings. And I, I would like to see the role of the Historical Commission expanded to give us the authority. Today, uh, I wasn't necessarily attempting to, uh, create some new standard today in my, uh, inquisition of William Bobo, but, um, I, I do think that we ought to have the ability to extract some concessions from an applicant, especially when here they are, they're going to redo the building. Now's the perfect time to extract those extractions, you know, or extract those concessions, uh, to say, gee, can't you do this? It's, I, I, I just, that to me is, seems logical that we would do that. So, um, hopefully, that's something that staff can assist us in, uh, in creating a methodology for us to be able to do that and give some teeth to our Historical Commission. You know, in some cities, you can't change out a piece of plumbing on a historical building without the blessing of the Historical Commission. I'm not suggestion that, suggesting we need to be quite that onerous, but, I, we got a long ways to go here in Santa Ana.
Okay. I'd like, welcome again, Vince, looking forward to it. I received today a letter from the Cynthia Kurtz, interim city manager, um, and what she is asking, there is a desire to strengthen the communication with council and provide a formal way of connecting your work to the council's decision- and provide a formal way of connecting your work to the council's decision-making." Some of your stuff that you just brought up, okay? "To this end, we would like to schedule a time that is convenient for the chair and other representative in choosing to speak out about the work you've accomplished over the past years and your plan for next year. The presentation will be at the beginning of a regularly scheduled council meeting in the near future. It would be very valuable for the City Council to understand your work and how it can assist them in their work." So, we got this, and Candy, you got it too. So we will be communicating, uh, to do a presentation and this council will have the best presentation on the historic resource than any other commission, okay? Okay, with slides and all that, so we will get that. So, uh, you know, we will be discussing, how do we want to present this in the time to, to give, you know, our past, where we are today and in the future. So I'll be contacting you probably next week to give you a time to look at that and we will discuss and come here and kind of do, uh, do things. So, we're going to be on television, guys, and educate the City Council, because they don't know, some of them don't know the work that we're actually doing. So with that, and thank you once again, staff, for all your hard work. And as we just know, you know, where we've been, where, where you came from and where you are today. So, thank you so much for all your hard work. And with that said, right on time, okay? This meeting is now adjourned. The next meeting will be a special meeting to be held September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, here in the chambers, right, uh, at four thirty PM. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.